Most of those are land bank properties.
Okay.
So, yes, they are abandoned and...
But they're sitting in residential maintenance.
And so what those would ultimately do is, seeing that you said we put around a trail, siding, educational opportunity, driving down Euclid, if I were to go over, I'd say, "Oh, my gosh, it might be a little park or something like that." It could actually track you.
Yes, these are going to be amenities for the area. And ultimately, we envision them, they would help increase property values. Because if you're familiar with this Page area, there are a lot of vacant buildings, some rubble, we're gonna be removing all of that and turning it into a green space park with a walking path.
How much...
So...
Do you have any pictures of how this is supposed to look?
I don't understand how much space you're talking about.
Next, Mr. Erving's next. Question. Yeah, I'll go with Mr. Erving's next. Okay, he did.
Did not take the last one.
You may move on.
I'm next?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I've heard the presentation a couple of times, and each time, I guess I have a... get a point based on the presentation. How high will the fence be that's gonna be on Mayfair for that area? Also, I don't know, maybe this is a question that goes to the city. What will happen to that building that's right on the corner of Mayfair and Hayden? That's sort of an eyesore. Are you gonna expand all the way to Hayden Avenue when you do your development? If so, right next to that area where that garden is, there's a building, an old laundromat and stuff that's been there for the last forty years. So, what will happen there? Are you gonna take over that entire section with the Northeastern District or what?
Yes, so...
And how high is the fence? That's how I'm wondering.
Yeah, the fence is gonna be your typical wrought iron style fence that will be about five feet high, I believe.
Can you get back to that exactly?
I don't have that specific typical...
The city has norms on how high fences need to be.
And we'll work with the city through our permitting on that. At the Scioto Basin, we are going to essentially be going from the street of Mayfair all the way to Scioto. So, there are a lot of vacant buildings which will be coming down through this project, and that will be all part of the basin.
Have you acquired those buildings?
We are in the process.
That will be on the hate. That will cover the hate.
Yes, it will go all the way to Hayden and Mayfair. Those buildings right there.
They'll take care of that corner there.
Correct.
The entire corner.
Yes.
I just wanna make a statement. This, I want everybody to understand, nothing is complete. When you deal with, with all this is done, it'll be coming through the community development, housing, and all of that, and that's in the general process now. Nothing has been done, and nothing has been acquired on any... So, we just, let's put that to rest right now. Because I have to put it to rest because that's a process.
Oh, man, step back.
Maybe let me finish.
Let her finish, man. Let her finish.
Let her finish.
What I'm saying is, the process, what they're doing, has to move through the process. And all of the, uh, the, uh, information goes, the process goes through community development, housing, and through the law department, and through Bumbalas, which is the general engineer. Now, that is what's happening at this point in fact. And something that caught my, and just a minute, something that caught me before, I'd like for the law director to go back and explain that we did get sued before from something of this nature.
Councillor Thomas, I, I, as Chair...
I'm just saying that.
As Chair, we're not gonna do that right now. I wanna go ahead and let the residents think, got questions, but we can do that later.
Well, that's what the no, no, no.
Okay, each one of these catch basins that you are claiming that's supposed to take out the water and so, so, uh, where are the leach pits that's supposed to be a contaminant and who's gonna account for the E. coli poison that these basins are going to leave in the city?
Well, this water will actually be treated by the plants as it goes through the soils.
That is not the answer.
There is not gonna be any sanitary flow.
Digital standing water beyond the day I was here.
You're telling me that that water stays inside these catch basins? What, what are your accounts for the E. coli poison that that stormwater that you're leaving? See, you're not looking at the big picture. That's gonna leave E. coli in the city. Each one of those basins that you claim are gonna treat, you're gonna have E. coli in the city.
It's not gonna be any more E. coli than what comes off of the roads and the other, the streets and the other hard circles. It's not gonna be sanitary.
With these catch basins?
No.
Then y'all, everybody get ready for E. coli in this city because that's what this is going to...
And you're treating when it gets to the lake.
Is there any other questions further away from the council table?
There's actually...
Any other questions before we go to the council table for the closing questions?
I just wanted him to correct, my question was, uh, do we have a say? I didn't say we didn't have a say. My question was, does citizens, not only in East Cleveland, but in other cities, do we have a say in this project? They will, and if we do, does it make any impact in terms of what the plans are? Would you respond to that? That's what, that's my question.
I apologize for not responding to that. But like the councillor woman said, we are going through a proper approval process, you know, and working with the community in doing this. And we have gotten input from the very beginning on this project. And this is, we've had three public meetings, at the thirty percent design, the sixty percent, and now the ninety percent design. So, now that we're coming close to a design, we're in a position to take it before the city to get the approvals.
And also, if I may, Mr. Chair. But I also wanted to say, I've, I've, I've sat through all, not just now. This has been on the table for a couple of years. It's not something that just come on the scene. It's something that has been on the table, and it has been explored, and it has been examined. Once we talked about, they talked about a hundred and forty, I think they, I read something where they even sent, uh, from the other community, off of a hundred and fifty second or something down there, and to the city of East Cleveland stating that something like this was going to take place. Also, um, I was trying to, Mr. Chair, uh, to state that the, um, law director had said something had taken place before, and that the city, uh, was in the position, and we got sued. So, would you mind if she told the residents about that?
Well, then we gotta ask him, the mayor.
No, it's not.
No, it's not.
About the, uh, the nineteen fifty-six losses whereby the EPA now has us under an order that we're to sign within a few days, and we're gonna bring everything back to the city council as the process goes forward. Because, uh, for instance, with reference to land acquisition, there are nineteen properties that they want, and each and every one of them will have to come before council and the citizens in order to review as we go over the acquisition of those properties. Now, the lawyers did tell me that if we don't have it done by May, they're gonna make a lawsuit for eminent domain. So, we're gonna, hopefully, I mean, we have input to a certain extent, but because of the EPA mandate that requires us to some extent, to a great extent, collaborate with the Northeastern Ohio Regional Sewer District in many of these projects, and because of the power that they have for eminent domain, um, we can perhaps affect it a little bit, but, um, we still have a responsibility to do our part to green our areas and to make it safe and sanitary for the citizens.
And this is what I'm trying to say, pardon me, Mr. Erving. This was what I was trying to say. You know, there's an underlining, uh, to this. It's not just something that just come into play, and it's not something that we have, uh, that we have, we don't have no, we are under a legal, um, obligation to do this. So, what I'm saying to you, don't get hung up on so much as what they're doing, but what is the fact that it's what legal and what we have to do, and that it has to be done the proper way, has to be gone through the proper channel, but we have to get it done. That's why I was sitting up there trying to say this, Mr. Chair. I don't just whis, uh, sit up here and whistle Dixie and don't know what I'm talking about. This is just an overview for me. I know what the underlining is, and these residents need to know. And Mr. Hurley back there, you are correct about many things that you have said, and I appreciate that. You may continue, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Erving. Very kind of you.
I have a question. So, in the other...
Oh, man, you keep going off on...
What everybody is going, you're just sitting to me, I'm sorry to tell you that. I'm like, ah, ah.
Okay, you can excuse yourself in the meeting. I'm not gonna go back and forth with you. Okay, so then either you, 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 you make everybody else just talking, or excuse yourself in the meeting.
So, there's eight other areas that this is happening right here in greater New Orleans, Ohio. So, what, has there been any negative impact on the community as far as this taking place? Has there been any negative community, uh, impact as far as you say with the E. coli or as far as the, the not operating up to par? Um, do you know about any of them, and if they're happening? What resolution? I just wanna get that clear, because a lot of things are being thrown out here.
Sure, sure. You know, these have actually been going very well. The only thing I can really think of is our Slavic Village Demonstration rain gardens. They were not properly maintained, they got overwhelmed by weeds, and so we had to go in there and pull out all the weeds and all of our plants and replant them to make sure that they function properly and they also look nice for the neighborhood. So, that's what we're gonna have to do. We have to make sure that these look good and that they function properly.
And as far as the E. coli and...
The E. coli is, we're, we're pulling E. coli out of the environment because we're reducing combined sewer overflows. When you hear about Euclid Beach and Villa Angela Beach being closed, that's due to combined sewer overflows and bacteria and E. coli getting into the environment. By pulling this stormwater, stormwater only being rainwater, out of that system, we're keeping more of that E. coli going to our treatment plant where it can possibly, where it can be treated and then released as clean water. So, we are not creating septic systems here where we're sending sanitary sewage.
And again, just briefly, understand, you know, about the E. coli issue. Humans get E. coli by coming in contact with this water. Drinking it, drinking it, swimming in, and things like that. These basins are gonna be fenced in, okay? And the water's gonna fall in the basin and then drain out into the nearby creeks and streams. I mean, if, there, there will not be a situation where people are bringing a cup or drinking from these basins to get E. coli. I, I think that's important to stress.
If I may, Chair? And, I mean, if the fence is six feet tall, and you, you, ladies and gentlemen, might require that there, six feet, we just have to go to the, uh, architectural review board and make them six feet tall and proceed with the processes. If that's your desire, then that would be our recommendation to the city to have the NAORSD go to the architectural review board and mandate that for the children playing in the area, as well as the protection of other residents, that the fences be six feet tall. So, then the architectural review board will require that they're six feet tall rather than five feet.
All right, Councillor King.
Six feet tall. Uh, thank you. I'd like to thank Joe and Jeff for coming out and making this presentation. You know, we've asked a lot of you over the last couple of months in regards to keep coming out and making this presentation. The councillor woman next to me actually got my question in, which I think is good because now, Joe, I'd like to ask you to go over it one more time about any type of bacteria or anybody, the possibility of someone getting sick. Can you go over it one more time?
Right, and I'll say, hopefully, you know, just kinda clarify a little bit, uh, E. coli, from everything that I understand, it's, you know, Google's a wonderful thing. I went on the Mayo Clinic and just researched this now, because I wanna be sure, and I wanna make sure I'm not giving the incorrect information, okay? E. coli, common instances of it come from human waste that comes in contact with your drinking water and food that you ingest. So, when you look on, you know, you hear about the whole thing that's going on with, um, uh, Chipotle and all that stuff, that's because their food, combination sources are not up to par, okay? When you deal with it in the sense of water, all right, it's water that you have to ingest or swim in, come in contact with. With these basins, as we've, what's that?
Right here.
Right, something like that. With these basins, as Jeff has described them, as we've tried to make clear, not only will they be fenced in, but this will be water that's falling from the sky, that's captured for a short period of time, and drains into the nearby streams, okay? That, that, that's it. And then, overall, okay, and again, overarching, and we've kinda touched on some of these issues tonight as well. You know, understand that the sewer district is not coming into East Cleveland, uh, with carte blanche to do whatever we want, and any repercussions, we walk away, okay? We are being watched by the United States government, the US EPA, we're gonna be watched by your council, we've been out here now twice, we've been in the community three other times, okay? So, and obviously, we have a community that's knowledgeable, that's, you know, aware of what's going on, and that if anything arises, I'm gonna be getting calls, Jeff's gonna be getting calls, our bosses are gonna be getting calls. There's not gonna be any hiding the ball here, okay? I see a, a lot of people who are gonna make sure that if anything happens, anyone gets sick, we're gonna know about it, okay? So, there's not going to be a situation where, you know, you're hearing of this mass sickness and, and disease, that's not what we're here for. These basins are, you know, it's, it's new in the sense that it's coming into East Cleveland, but these are not things that are, you know, brand new, that have never been done. There's no, not gonna be pooling water, mosquitoes, Zika virus.
So, we're not being experimented on?
Where is that from?
That, that, that's, that's all from council. I'll acknowledge three more, and that's it.
It wasn't all from council. I've got one more thing to say. Uh, I don't think he meant, Mr. Hurley meant that E. coli was gonna, I mean, he says it because he's, he's kinda out there, but I don't think he's saying that E. coli is gonna be here and he's gonna be all, and he can deal with, uh, all of that. I think he's letting you know that germs do, uh, 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 occur. And as far as anything else, I wanna thank you for coming out. And I wanna say one more thing. The, um, the, uh, the cheat sheet or whatever is, is, is very good. And I think that basically, the smaller the groups are, the better understanding you would have had. Because like is happening here, you got a small group, and you can ask questions in a environment that is not hostile, but actually looking for information. Now, this group here is going to be, walk out of here, very knowledgeable, and if they need you anymore, you're gonna, you're gonna have to, uh, the communication with you. But there is others in the city of East Cleveland that is totally clueless of what's happening. They don't know. And I think maybe if you could get in some more smaller groups, uh, to, and use these sheets, and, and you won't have such a hostile environment.
You know, Councillor, it's funny you say that. Jeff and I know that after the last meeting, we did...
And I was telling you that.
Right, after the last meeting, we did, you know, we, we sat down in our offices and kind of came up to that exact conclusion, that we want to get the correct information out as best as possible, and the way that we did it up to this point, maybe was not as effective as it could have been. I think tonight was hopefully a little bit better, and that's something that going forward, you're absolutely right.
And, and, and basically, I don't, I don't knock anything when somebody's trying to get information, but whether it's good, bad, or indifferent, you can hear it and you can decipher what's going on. I mean, everybody don't understand, like I said, I've been hearing this for years. And when I heard the, uh, the director, law director, say what we needed to have done a long time ago, and I remember we did get sued, and why we got sued, these are things that you also need to know. Not only that what's coming, but what's coming if you don't get it done. And you guys, yes, you are, I appreciate that, and I'm telling you right now, I appreciate it. If there's anything that I can do, if you wanna meet with some of the other small groups down the road and what do, I'll be glad to put those groups together. Thank you.
We have, I, I, I've got three more that I said I'd take. I think it was delayed back at any point, yes?
They say a picture is worth a thousand words, correct? So, I'm wondering, um, saying that, if actual visualization, that it's possible that we could do onsite tours of those existing basins already that have been out there and be able to, maybe that would resolve some of our concerns and fears, or it could establish even more questions. But is it possible that you could set that up and maybe seasonally? Because I'd like to see what's gonna happen to all this snow out here when it melts in those existing basins. I'd like to see this summer when we have all the rain and whatnot, and, and the mosquitoes, and it's hot and what, but what happens when that dries up? Because I'm thinking that soil also acts somewhat as a filter and a drain, and it may also filter in the topsoil a layer of concern. So, these are just some questions that I was wondering, but first of all, is it possible to have like tours or something that we could actually see?
You know, that would be something I'd have to take back and, you know, talk to the higher ups about, but I think that is a good idea, so we'd have to get back. Now, the one thing I was thinking is, is we did give our frequently asked questions sheet to have on the East Cleveland Facebook page. Uh, we do have some renderings, and maybe we could put some additional information on there that might be beneficial, and at the least, we could possibly give a, uh, list of other green infrastructure projects in which you could take your own tour. Yeah, it may not be facilitated through us, but it'd be something that we could show.
We've got two more. Erving, I was going more than the other young man.
Okay. Two thousand and forty, East Cleveland has done this project where we lost a complete street, Bellmore. Part one of what I'm gonna say. Due to faulty plumbing, as we'll call it, we lost the entire street. Number two, if any of us go to the, uh, it's on to my time. Any of us go to the, um, service station, you'll see that these basins failed. We still have standing water, we still have water levels that has high E. coli counts. You wanna talk about soil? Yes, it does absorb into the soil. The reason we couldn't build on Bellmore is because of E. coli poison. And if you notice the new residents that are there, how many years before they had to build there? You couldn't put anything on that property until the levels were back up. So, if your plumbing fails, who's responsible?
The sewer district.
The sewer district. And, and the biggest problem with green infrastructure is maintenance. So, when you said those basins, I don't know the basins you were referring to, but because they're ponding water, they haven't been properly maintained. We already have operation and maintenance manuals for all of our green infrastructure projects, and they differ per site on what maintenance needs to be done and when to make sure that they function properly.
Okay, we're gonna have the last question, 'cause I said fifteen minutes, change it to forty-five minutes.
Hello, oh, my name is Dante Gresham. I was, um, just, I just wanted to raise a couple, um, questions. What Councillor woman, um, basically stated was this may be happening in the city of Cleveland anyway. So, I think that some of the questions we, um, have answered is basically security. Who's gonna do the security around this? Because even if you put fences up, we already know that there was some residents, um, that's ministering, um, through society, are running through, um, family dollars. So, how would they not run through a fence? Um, another thing, will this increase, um, the, the sewage bills? I know maybe it'll say, it'll say no, but yes, they may have went up already, but it can, it can increase again in the future.
No, they're continuing, they were on a eight, uh, ten year schedule. Okay, they're on a ten year schedule.
Okay, so even if the ten years are up, will, um, new residents, like you said, it's a future in East Cleveland, will them residents have to pay higher, um, sewage bills due to, um, this particular project? And if no security is, is brought in by the sewer district, um, how is the city of Cle-, uh, East Cleveland is gonna pay for that if they're already, if we're already, you know, having some financial difficulties? And then also, how long would the project take? Would it take away from people, um, bringing more business? Are residents willing to come into the city, um, of East Cleveland, while this project is going on? Because I know in Cleveland, when Euclid corridor was being built, a lot of businesses, um, took left downtown Cleveland and went elsewhere. So, would that happen here in East Cleveland while that project is going on? Would it be a lot of blockage of streets that, that, that will occur? Um, and I think that was basically all of the questions that I had at the moment.
Okay, so, uh, Project Clean Lake is an unfunded mandate through the federal government. So, it is up to us, the sewer district, to pay for it, which comes from sewer rates. We are going through a rate study right now, and we will be holding public meetings throughout later twenty sixteen to understand exactly, you know, what the rate structure is gonna look like going forward. So, we don't, we don't know that yet, we're doing a study on that right now. Um, as far as security, I don't think we're really doing anything that's going to require increased security in those areas. Um, if someone, for whatever reason, were to drive a car through the fence in the basin, we would be out there the next day replacing that fence and making sure that the basin, um, is corrected.
And one thing is, since, since no security is actually in the plan, um, this question is for the council, do y'all believe y'all can provide security for this project?
Is that, is that, is that the last question? Uh, nobody, I don't think the city's gonna have police officers sitting here and watch the, watch the rainfall. I mean, but...
But I'm saying just the basin, and because you don't, like he was saying, is sometimes it may be toxins and stuff. So, if a, a child so happens to get in it, or a resident so happens to get in, in that, um, basin or in that area, that secure area, will the police of East Cleveland be able to deter that from happening?
You know, all of our, I'm... We, we have fences up at these green infrastructure projects because the community requested it. None of our other green infrastructure have fences. There really is not a safety concern, uh, but the, the public wanted that, so, so we agreed to that. But, um, we're not really too concerned with security.
So, there hasn't been any other instances in other places where people are desecrating the, or doing whatever to that actual...
No, I mean, there, if, there might be some graffiti, then we will take care of that, and that is part of our operation and maintenance manual. We're already...
So, like any other place, any place can be vandalized, anything can be vandalized.
Sure.
Well, just real quick, yeah, uh, the police chief Cardilli caught the guy that robbed family dollars, and he's in our jail right now.
Good.
He caught him single-handed.
Oh, my goodness.
What about Walgreen?
All right. All right, uh, I, I think that's gonna conclude. Thank you very much for taking the time to be honest.
Thank you for having me, yeah.
Thank you. I'm sure we'll be having you all back out in the next couple of weeks.
This is a small group, please, and can I say?
Can I get a motion, uh, for my jury?
I'd like to make a...
Yeah, yeah, it was the last thing on it.
I wanted to say something. Not, not anything to do with the sewer thing.
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna stall for a minute, we're gonna make a, a public remark.
Yeah.
Hey, hey.
Motion to adjourn the meeting?
Yeah.
We're onto the public, public speaking.
Talk about the public being... I, I, I just, what I wanted to say was this.
Okay, hold on a second. We, we still in the meeting, we're going to close, each council member here.
We're not to the public speaking.
We're gonna make it, we're gonna make it...
We're to the public speaking.
No, that, that, we use that time for that.
No, what I need to say, let, let me say this, so we can get out of here.
You can leave now if you wanna keep talking. That's probably, you, you, you keep talking.
You're changing up your own agenda. Your agenda, you didn't go through the agenda.
You can be next.
Lamar, you don't know, uh... Please toss me out.
Lamar Smith, Reverend Lee, and some of you may know the NBA or basketball player Allen Iverson. But in eighteen seventy, the Voting Rights Act, that was the first voting rights act that was never really enforced, where Lam, uh, Lamar Smith was killed in front of a courthouse when people registered in court, that was in the nineteen thirties. Uh, Reverend Lee was killed for trying to register people to vote in nineteen thirties. Let's bring it up to nineteen ninety-six. Allen Iverson was seventeen years old in Hampton, Virginia, and he was prolific in ath- athletics, and he got into a brawl because someone called him the N-word, was N-word, and he got into a brawl. Well, everybody who charged was African-American, just, and he got fifteen years. This was recently. He got, Allen Iverson, the NBA, uh, uh, he was, uh, MVP...
He got, Allen Iverson, the NBA, uh, uh, he was, uh, MVP one year, top draft. He got fifteen years. And what happened was, there was, the community was such in an uproar, they sent him to a farm and he did four months. And they let him out. But Wilder, I don't know if you remember him, he was a governor, Joe. He was a governor, first black governor, gave him clemency and the other three blacks that were charged. But I bring that up in, in this month because it, it, it's what we're sitting here for, what, what, what any community is about. Glad to walk out and support some voting. Okay, if Wilder hadn't been there, he would have had that hangover. Anyway, he, they let him out. He had a, a nice white lady that mentored him. He graduated, he went to Georgetown, and, and, and the rest is history. So my point is this, we cannot take voting for granted. Now, you, if you're upset with Tamir Rice, you're upset with Melissa Williams, Timothy Russell, up to a hundred thirty-seven shots, and I go on and on, you gotta vote. Okay, the primary coming up in March fifteenth is crucial. You, you can't move to the general until you get to the primary. So you gotta vote, Brandon King. So voting's, we've died for that. Just the point is, we've died for that. And for us not to be voting like we should, I had to get that out this year. I mean, nineteen ninety-six, we're still dealing with this, this kinda discriminatory mess, okay? If Wilder hadn't stepped in and what a community, they charge all the African-Americans and the, and the Caucasians who started it, it never get done anytime. This is nineteen ninety-six, not nineteen thirty. So we have to vote. Everybody's sitting around this table, they're sitting here because of the vote or if you didn't vote. So the primaries coming up March fifteenth, you got, uh, the prosecutor on there, which is crucial, okay? Please do your homework like these guys have done it, and please vote. I needed to say that, so that it be ready, so that it be told. Thank you.
I think he said, oh, that, that I need to deal with is consistent with voting. Uh, but what I wanted to say, and what I am going to say, that I appreciate everyone that's sitting here. And everyone that voice and asks questions. No question is stupid. No question is funny. If you ask it, you want it. And, and I've always been told, sometimes when one asks a question, the person next to you might have been afraid to ask the question, but got the answer. And that goes back to Mr. King. He said, the, uh, other, my colleague over here asked a question that he wanted to ask, but she asked it first and he got the answer. Since time is of the essence, and I'm gonna straighten this out one more time. If you all need small groups before May, I will be available to try and help you and get some of my residents to come out. And we can do, uh, small groups where you can talk to. Because everybody that is not fluent and have, uh, computer savvy or can go up on the internet and all of that, we got people that haven't arrived yet. So, uh, I'm just thankful that you did come back out and thankful to the chair for inviting you out, even though he had to take it from the floor, which was all right because we didn't have, uh, that much on the agenda. And we had enough time to let everybody get, uh, their, uh, questions out. Even Mr. Holmes settled out and got it together. And I wanna thank everybody again for coming out and all this, now, to, uh, this, uh, council meetings and that. And the two young men, I didn't catch your names, but welcome.
We'd have to see the question.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Graham.
Well, yeah, I just wanna thank both of you for coming out. I'm more aware of what's going on. Um, you said there is a website, and so we go on the website and we can do additional browsing and information. I would encourage everybody to do that as well. And, um, just again, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Joe, Jeff, thanks again. So we'll see you some more when this is done, Bill. Appreciate your patience, the gentleman.
I wanna thank everybody, I wanna thank everybody for coming out tonight. When we're in meetings, this is trying to respect everybody so everybody can be heard, so their questions can be answered. This is gonna be a process, and, uh, we're gonna get through this together. We ought to work together.
Follow your agenda.
Some people just don't understand about being proper and respectful.
Follow your agenda.
So, anyway, can I get a motion on the adjournment for the night?
Does it need to be adjourned?
Move, second, all favor eye. Eye is that, so.